Mr Deputy Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming out this evening. And thank you for your forbearance. Had I realised so many people were coming this evening, the room would have been set up to accommodate them. I do apologise if you're a bit squashed in, but sorry, there's nothing else I can do to shorten the notice. Can I just say, this is a dual meeting at the Stapleford Town Council, and this town park, I'm delighted to see so many members of the public here this evening. This is really unusual, other than it's an annual council meeting and we're letting you be there. It's wonderful to see you here, and I hope you found the evening interesting. However, this is not a public meeting. I have been contacted by one gentleman who wishes to make statements, and that will happen. Otherwise, I would ask you to listen to what's being said, and if you have any comments, contact your town council, borough councils, whoever, after the meetings. Can I point out to you that Stapleford Town Council is a parish council. It is a minor local authority and has no regulatory authority over the highways in the town. It is a statutory council team, but we cannot instruct works. And I do have to say that to you. The highways are the responsibility of Nottinghamshire County Council, and your county councillors are Councillor Stan Hetkendoff and Mrs Jackie Williams. I'm mindful that lucky here this evening, it's a very warm evening, and we've got a long agenda. And I'm craving the indulgence of the Deputy Mayor this evening at the Town Council, and asking us to take the item in Brookhill Street, bring it forward, take it earlier in the evening. So we'll start the agenda, and Mr Councillor Rockford Borough Council will make his presentation, and then we'll take the item in Brookhill Street. Is everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anything to apologize for?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I apologize to the council of Bee Hall, from Ruff, to Susan Room, Miss Jan Tarnett, and Miss Jan Wood.
Asher, anything to apologize for?
Yes, Mr Chairman, at this point, I'll do what I usually do. Anyone for Roxton, please show, thank you. Anyone for allotments, please show, thank you. Nottinghamshire County Council, I don't think they have anything this evening. Item group Hill Street, I understand there are a number of councillors who do have an interest here. Can you please show now? No, I'm not asking where you can speak at me, you're actually a bit interested in it. I understand that Councillor Rice lives in the adjacent area, the same. I know that Councillor Dargan, his daughter lives there and has an interest in it. Can you please show your interest?
Because I set a petition up and that's the thing, sorry.
No, that's not an interest. It's interesting if someone who lives there is related to you.
Not on our wall.
Or you have an interest in it. Right, that's fine. Looking at the agenda this evening, Town Centre Team, anyone want to declare, I think Councillor. Anything else that's on the agenda, I can't think of the top of my head, think of anyone that has a link to me on this evening to declare an interest. But if something comes up during the meeting, can you please show? Thank you very much. Thank you, Olive Green. Thank you very much for that. Request made by members of the public to address the Town Council, I understand Mr Redgate would like to make a statement. Now, what I'm proposing to do here is again, I'm craving your indulgence here, but rather than take it at this point, if you could take it immediately before the item into Brookhill Street. If we're all, if it makes sense, rather than take it then at Christmas lights, and then we just think about what's been said again. Thank you.
The next item is the Christmas lights switch on.
My name is Adam, the proper service manager at Boxer Bowe Castle, so I'm responsible for running the events for Boxer Bowe. Within our, within the authority, there's been a few changes and a few reviews done. As previous years, our team have been primarily around Christmas, working on these, these Christmas lights switch ons. With a bit of a lack of parity in terms of how places like Kilmarnock and Stapleford have been treated, and what we've tried to do is address that balance a little bit. So previously, Christmas lights have been, the Stapleford Town Team have had support from Matt and Luke, Karen, the Town Centre Management Team. There isn't really running events, whereas my team, the professional events organisers, with a good knowledge of the health and safety and all of the other areas, are going to actually plan and to organize an event. Now, what we're proposing to do is, we've decided we're going to take over the Stapleford Christmas lights switch ons from the Town Centre Management Team, so they can focus on economic development, which is what they're doing this past year. Within that in mind, what we're asking out of the Town Irish Councils is to, that are interested, is to match funds amount of money towards the Christmas lights switch ons. Now, last year's event cost just over £4,000, with money based from businesses, and the rest of the money potentially coming from the Foxer budgets. Now, my proposal is that we will take on the management, the booking and delivery of the event today. We're looking for a match fund, so we can get this into a better event than it's been two years, it's got better potential than it is. And my team, hopefully, we're able to bring some improvements, some changes, some technical know-how towards this event. So what we're looking for is a match fund, so I've already increased to already £2,000 towards the event. I would like, we'd like to ask the council whether or not you see fit to match that funding, and then we can try and go forward like we've done the last few years.
Mr Chairman, now, we've lived a situation here, I do want to do the this to you, the same council you're running this month. Like, switch on then, Town Centre Team, want to see if it opens, Town Centre, let's draw a line and then forget about it. But I have to say that you have not budgeted for this. So again, as with the Christmas lights that we discussed at the last meeting, you would need to look at your budget to see exactly how you are going to pay for it. So you need to look down your CV, initiatives and expenses, and see if you can find a way to spend that, or take the money out of the preset, and then preset for next, sorry, out of resources, revenue, reserves. Then preset for it again, when you do the new budget to bring the money back in, you would also need to be looking to preset for continued expenditure on business events in years to come. Last year, my manager prepared for this, he spent over £300 on the Christmas lights.
I'd just like to add on to that, obviously, this is going to be an ongoing thing. It's not like one, I think we could just pay each year, one year, it's going to be budgeted each year. I am bearing in mind that quite happy, I think we should be putting most towards this. The only thing I would counsel is, please, all those people around this room, when it comes to budget, if we've got presets, or considering our preset, £2,000 plus, the amount of money for council of the Christmas lights as well. Then, when it comes to a budget meeting in January, please bear in mind, this has got to eventually come out as a preset. I'm quite happy to do that, but please bear this in mind when it comes to budget, and don't say, we don't want this, we don't want that. We cannot be taking £2,000 out of reserve every single year. So it does need to come out the preset. We've been continually cutting money out of that, or savings, and trying to do that. But do bear in mind, that has got to be funded each year. And it will have to, I feel inevitably, lead to an increase in the preset to account for some of this money. Because we don't have the money to keep doing that here. That's all I need to want to say, more, so asking members to do bear this in mind, in general.
Alex, can you bring the breakdown of what you're going to spend on that, just throw money on?
I haven't got a breakdown, no, but I had to break down the market. I mean, I mean, the biggest expenditure generally is on security, first aid, and the health and safety elements, the non-fun elements. But we would also be looking at spending on fireworks. I'd like to work with the Town Team, they've already been involved in the production of this event, so it's not something that would be in isolation. But what we're trying to do is separate headache, so that the event is done, and if it becomes a bit of a disaster, stressing about it, nothing to worry about. In terms of the breakdown, I haven't got the exact details of what we're doing on this year. I'll probably look at about 100 fireworks, which is about the same as what we've had spent for all the other localities as well. But again, this is up for discussion, and I wouldn't do anything in isolation.
Sorry, yeah, I was going to say, you're up for discussion, you're up for discussion too. Because what if we decide to give you the money, and obviously we did that on yourself, and the Foxes, we didn't decide where that money's being spent with that.
No, because, no, because one thing I was made aware of is that the business in this, that there is a Stapleford Town Team, who do the best interest of this and be involved in the events.
Please, one meeting.
Now, I wouldn't do anything in isolation, so in every other locality that we're working in, we have the steering group, and we listen to what the steering group are actually saying, and we can advise whether or not it's practicable or not, and if it's not, we'll do something on our own budget.
But we don't have a member of the Town Council, no, we don't have a Richard, but, we don't have a. Mr Chairman, I think if the Town Council was mindful to grant funds towards this project, we would expect at least one member, if not more. It costs for myself to be on that group, as it's possible financially, not having got the time, but we would need to.
Yeah, I mean, that's the norm, that is the norm.
You would need to invite Town Centre.
With all the steering groups around the Bowe, generally our members that sit on the steering groups, as well as residents, as well as business owners as well, because we've got to make sure that what we're doing is engaging the members of the public, and also making sure that it's beneficial to businesses as well, and it's fair to the rights, I think, so.
David.
Yeah, two things. First of all, I hope that the 50% of the money we're granted would actually go on the lives itself. That is the main, obviously, reason we came to this purpose, I understand about the rest. Secondly, I agree with the leader regarding how it's going to be funded. I'm hopefully minded that money will come out, unless it's going to any reserve or anything else this year.
Mr Chairman, it's a different time to say that at this moment. The way, at the moment, it's all balancing, as you will see if you've looked at your papers. And there is, it's a little bit of a disparity between money and spending, but I can't see how £2,000 can be found when it hasn't been budgeted for without you resorting to looking at your reserves. Had the Town Council been aware of this change during the budgetary process, obviously, it could have made a low incidence. But it was not aware of it, there may be, as I say, I would need to through everything, see where I can find some savings, but at the moment, they're running on empty, so I don't want to steal the savings that come from. So you would need to take worst case scenario, you need to reserve to cover it.
They're asking for £2,000 for a event that's going to last three days, four days, or perhaps, and we're not the £4,000, but only baskets, it would have lasted for six or eight weeks.
You know, that leads on to the same thing, because of any money you invest, you want to see back, either in entertainment for the people of statehood, or extra monies for the businesses. So the towns you've started in, have you evidence to say that your involvement at quite a high cost for a parish council has been worth it in terms of bringing in extra people, bringing in extra money?
Yeah, I mean, the example, I mean, for Eastwood, it's slightly easier, the larger populations for start, but yes, I mean, the footfall has increased for the Christmas events for both, for both localities. Also, I've been around to all the businesses in Eastwood and Cheltenham, the ones that prepare to stay open, it is very much that you have to get a buy-in from the businesses. But the ones that prepare to stay open saw more footfall, they often go, occasionally, the members of the public, we put it to context, I mean, Eastwood probably saw about 3,500, 4,000.
It was about the same size.
Yeah, so I mean, you do get a lot of people out, and they're well received, these types of events, even though they are very short. I mean, I personally think a Christmas lights switch on is four hours, is quite a long time. I mean, the real reality of the situation from the Drake, they're coming out, a bit of entertainment, but realistically, they come to see the lights things switch on, the Christmas tree going on, and the fireworks. And what, everything else is sort of additional. What I like, what we try to do with Eastwood especially, is spread things further along the town, so having more things happening in different locations. So that businesses weren't being completely left out by the fact that they were at end one, third one, the other. So it's all, these are all factors we have to take into account, but again, we have to relate it to what budget we've got and what is realistically possible. Street theatres, for example, are so expensive nowadays, that I wouldn't recommend booking on the street theatre, but something like the St James' Hospital, a local person from this area, who already has been doing this, is probably going to be a lot more cost effective than buying someone in from outside. So it's, I think there is a benefit, and I've seen that benefit through both Eastwood and Eastwood.
But businesses come to you and say, you'll be extra covered.
I'm here, I'm focused on business, that's why.
Want to see the money.
What I said is, the steering groups, what I do is invite the businesses down, and we've got lots of quite proactive members of these different towns that come down to pick a tour thing, if they can volunteer events that we do as well, because they can see the value in it. Obviously, I can't say that it's going to make a huge difference to a carpet business, because you're not necessarily going to plonk a carpet as for a Christmas light switch on. But you never know, and the fact that you're open and people wandering around does make a difference.
I mean, I know if Alex gets involved, events are always going to have done stuff for him before he's brought you what he does, but this Town Council hasn't budgeted the money for it this year, the Town Team have. So I think the Town Team should carry on with it this year, because we'd even booked the Santa, we've got businesses, you know, that was interested, are already interested, we'd already started planning it. And maybe come back next year and have to tax the Town Council if they wanted to chip in. You know, why take it off a group that's already done it for the last three years, and it's been very successful? They've been the biggest events ever, we haven't had to spend hundreds of pounds on security, because we haven't needed it. We've done it as it's done, and there've been ruined events, you know, it saves taxpayers' money out that we haven't budgeted for.
Mr Chairman, I can just come in here, as someone who is ready to put suicide on a memory, somebody every year because of the health and safety implications with it, I could quite appreciate the situation. The problem we have with any event, whether it's lasting an hour, four hours, or a weekend, is the health and safety, is the security, is the stewarding. And it's wonderful, and we don't need all this until there is a problem. And I take you back about five years to Birmingham, when there was a horrendous issue at their switch on the Christmas lights, the old man can key was pushed today. So I would say there is a great necessity for security, there is a great necessity for the health and safety situation to be followed, as it should be. Because if anything happens, those that are organising it have to be prosecuted for manslaughter. So I would ask you to bear in mind that where the main advantage of these events are, is on health, safety, and organisation side, I think, I would say, bear your awareness. So please, any, don't think that we can make cuts.
I'd like to reiterate that, I mean, at the end of the day, I am under pressure always to try and do things in a cost-effective way. And the times that I have thought, maybe we could have saved on this up there, and I haven't, I spent that money, I paid that. And if you say that these things haven't happened, last year in Eastwood, within five minutes of the road transfer, we had an emergency, we had to get someone off the side. So these, what do you think could never happen, generally, what you find it, does happen. And unfortunately, it's no comfortable situation, when I'm looking at approaching an event, I'm responsible for all the members of the public that are out there. And I wouldn't be able to, I'd feel comfortable by saying, right, I'm not going to spend the security, because it never, it's never happened before. Because as we know, as previously said from two years ago, or last week, from the others involved in, we had problems with our station paper, people, it was never expected, and it happened. And in 14 years, it's never happened, but it happened. And so I cannot approach it, and I don't think, it's good practice for anyone pushing events to be going, it's never happened, so we never, we never look at that. Because the likelihood is, when you start doing that, that's where things go wrong. This is why larger events, like Slender, for example, gets out of money, because they need to make sure people are safe. It's a different kettle of fish, because yes, that's 20,000 people, firstly, a few thousand that come out here, but it's the same thought process we're going to go into. I will make sure the members of the public are safe, and they have a good time, and they're home. I doubt if they want that over, I will make sure we're right, correct, by visiting the students and security people, they need to know what they're doing. Now, as much as it's great to have volunteers coming up with that, which we do also do, the reason we're bringing professionals in is because I can actually talk to a professional in a way that I cannot talk to a volunteer, who's come down and given their time, and everything is coming up and becoming contentious. So that's where we come in, that's what we would bring in as a team, apart from the financial input we put into it, a whole separate professional input, and the time we put into it, as well as planning the operation. So that would be taken completely from the hands of the others, from the Towns, and they actually get involved on a steering basis, but they're not having to worry about the financial profession, talking this and the other, because that's something that my team can deal with, and will deal with invoice things, and with any thing. You know, that's something to say about our facility, it's just the most important thing to consider about our management.
Thank you, Chris. Eastwood, in central Eastwood, it's quite the bit, I have my name myself as an engagement. However, just to give my members some idea, we might get sponsored in the week. Do you think Ikey is the one paying most of this, John?
Ikey? No, Ikey don't pay.
You used to?
Yeah, no, they don't pay.
They don't pay now?
No, the Town Council pays. That's something that I'm actually talking to the Town Council about as well, about making sure, again, it's coming down to the whole idea, I think a bit of parity between the different towns. So I've asked these from Town Council for more commitment, because at the moment, it's been, my budgets have been stretching to take these deals, so I don't think it's better. I think we can, just to put you again, some of the advice and the budget that we've got. So.
Ikey used to fund it for them, for the most part, it just might give my members an idea, so if you get a sponsorship that might not, you might get a little bit, so they'll put their own net cash in.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's a difference, depends on the location, if you do get sponsorship, I mean, Eastwood, it's things like, the shop is a shop, in Eastwood. In Baste, we might have supported that, Trams and Neptis supported that last year, as in the year before. But this year, again, we'll be looking at other sponsors, other local businesses, people like CP Walk, for example. But there are other organisations, there are other companies within the area that are happy to get involved in events and support events, but here, probably not the best option.
No, you should be, there might be various companies, but.
Yeah.
The shops are getting a bit tired now, on this issue.
The town council expects the Stapleford, unfortunately, they're fortunate, they have an Akey, they're gorgeous.
And they're.
It's a journey time to, oh, you've got to say.
I mean, which does, again, for you guys, yeah, it's, I mean, what we want to do is, all the Christmases are starting to move further back into November, early into November. And what we're proposing to do is actually move them back to the closest event, when Christmas starts, so.
And your idea wasn't then to actually take it away from, but take it to arts and events, rather than say the town?
Well, when the new district tracing came to, to the place in Boxton, we did a review of what activities have been done by whom. And the thing is, it seems, it seems a bit illogical to be having people that have expertise in economic development running events. When you've got an event team that the authority are paying for. So the decision was made with, in consultation with councillors, of others, my editor services, who are the head of the environment and world problems, and we talked about how we can, best, we would think of that, it's still offered the same service, but within the correct remit of those departments.
So I have a question then. Surely if there's anybody in the Stapleford Town Team's budget, whatever that is, I don't know, you cannot, you have not been going to the right stages, you're able to run the event, and you can.
From my perspective, it doesn't matter who it is, who it's going to fund, it's not an argument, it's the same.
Mr Chairman, a point of clarification with regards to local governments' finance, we're further in this subject, but my understanding is that money that are allocated are allocated as per the different functions. For some reason, the way things that were going, Town Centre Team had taken on the Christmas event, I take it because the retail side saw that as a way of making money, and that's when they became involved in it. So it does make sense, if you think about it, for arts and events to run events. My understanding is that Rockford Borough Council, with their new administration, have looked at this, and this is why they're doing it, but the budgets haven't been altered, there's a budget for development, a budget for arts and events, and within those budgets that's heavily spent.
Yeah, I mean, just what's basically happening is, the money that the Town Centre Management Team would have invested is the money that I would invest in my budgets, and that means they can say that money for development, or for arts and events, they don't.
So rather than going to them, the Christmas is very too.
One knows the same, it's my budget, if the money's not moving anywhere, it's just, we're spending for our budget plans, and then from there, our budget.
The money in economic development should be spent on economic development, rather than on entities.
I'm matched the following, you're saying that you're looking for a match fund for £3,000, but you're also looking at local business involvement. So if you get local investment, do business at best, so does that mean, that I'm on top of the 2,000, or is that, would that be a part of it? And what my concern is, you know, that £2,000 is one thing, if businesses are going to do best, then does that still mean that you want £2,000 exactly from us? Or is it a match fund between the Town Council and the local businesses, and just very typically, have any businesses pledged anything?
Well, I've not matched a very many businesses in St James' Place, I wouldn't know that they've done, but I mean, I would say that realistically, in what I'm looking for is a commitment from the Town Council, because as a result, I mean, you represent the people's paper. And if it's an ongoing thing, because if, for example, one year, we have a very good input from the businesses, that's great. What if the next year, businesses can't seem to bring the money? Suddenly, the Christmas lights switch on either disappears, or gets a shift in scale, which is perceived, and it has reputational implications for how the council is viewed, as well as for us, as well, we're in Boxton, when things disappear. And in some ways, the money's coming from Town Council, it's guaranteed, we know that it's coming, just like if it became the way Eastwood, or where it goes, other towns do it, we know that we've got that. And then any other additional money, we could get remarks, and make things better.
Mr Chairman, I think this is what you have to tip more to that session at the beginning, if the Town Council doesn't mind to put much fund, you need to look at that, and then you save it, and then when you budget in, so that's the next financial year, you will then need to look at budgeting for Christmas lights this year. Then when you come the following year, you will need to do the same, and then the new administration after that will need to take a decision again, whether they wish to match fund. And again, you will look at it, if you do with everything, do you wish to go down this road, is this, and again, you wish to continue to support. But the Christmas, I say, the Christmas lights switch on is a very, it's one of these events, if it doesn't take place, it will do miss. Can I please ask for one meeting, do you wish to speak, if you wish to speak, if you please go out of the chamber, the acoustics in here are very difficult, I'm in my room tonight, no one has a spot for me, so I have to listen to the speakers while I'm running the meeting. So if you can keep it quiet, I'd be very appreciative. So that's what I, this is what I was saying to the council around this table. If you are mindful to support this event, and you want money towards it, but you then have to do it again in January, this is not a one-off, this will be a continual presetting issue for the budget.
Unless something's changed in the past this week, I don't even think it's been properly approved at Boxton yet, at a committee, I'm sure it's got to go to another committee, yeah, unless I'm wrong. But I'd like to propose, as I said earlier, we'll let the staff for Town Team do it this year, because they've already started doing it anyway, and then we come back next year, and if we pre-set it in.
Mr Chairman, that's actually nothing to do with the Town Council, we can propose that the Town Centre Team do anything, all we can look at this evening is that Rockford Borough Council, the City Service Office are all going to be doing the presentation, and they're asking you to match the funds for the Christmas lights switch on. You have to decide. You have to decide, one, are you going to match fund it or not? Two, how much are you going to match fund it for, the full amount or a percentage of? Three, not match fund it at all, and then obviously not be involved in the event whatsoever. So as I think, there are three options. Fourth option, you could ask for it to continue to another meeting for further discussion. However, I don't think that's going to help anyone, because it's going to leave Roxton Borough Council in state, that they don't know whether the town council's funding or not. We're at July already, the events we have took this late November, early December. You need to, basically the borough council needs to know if you're mindful to support them or not. You've got, pretty crazy.
Well, I propose that we don't support it this time, we'll opt it again.
Do you have a second for that motion? All right, pause. Not match fund.
You've got to make a clarification on that, uh, and the trade project, you don't have to vote it. Does that mean that there will not be any states at that?
That's a very good point.
Is that part of the proposal? Because if the town centre team, Rockstone decided that it goes through this avenue, does that mean that lights are not necessarily going to happen?
Well, the actual light, actual putting up of the lights is separate from what you're.
No, no, it is.
But it's, it's, it's not, it is with, it falls with the, now, so, like I said, the money from economic development, they are going to use it for economic development work. I, I'm, I'm.
It's, it's, we don't want it to work right.
Well, my team might be involved, I mean, the town team might be involved, but my team probably won't be involved.
My understanding is that the chairman, Roxton Borough Council have decided that the Christmas lights event within the borough of Rockstone has to be run by their arts and events team. Um, so going back to when I worked for large authorities, that would be then, didn't allow finance to go out through another part of the borough council to fund an event that they had already decided was being funded by a particular budget head. Does that make sense to people? Um, that being the case, again, stress that you're being asked to match fund this event. I would think if you weren't much funding, you would have very, you would only have the two K or whatever to, to do it, you wouldn't have the full amount. So that would restrict it very much what you could do. I think that's how I'm reading it anyway, I hope that helps members.
Um, absolutely.
I just wondered, what is the town cent, your, your committee or the town committee, what is their budget for Christmas lights, which are?
They've got enough money to do it, what was it, last year and the year before, which were brilliant, they'd already started funding, they'd already started doing it, we'd ring fence them, wouldn't they?
Mister, Mister Chairman, I, I don't really think we can get into it.
Different meeting, yeah.
The town centre team has been set up through economic development of Roxton Borough Council to help them enhance and rebates the lights in town centre in Stapleford, Kimberley, Eastwood, and now Beeston, as all of them within this realm. And they are funded for economic development. As I say, for some reason they were doing the Christmas lights switch on, which I can only take it was something to do with the helping retail football on a particular Saturday in the run up to the Christmas period. However, Roxton Borough Council said that they are funding, and I know I'm repeating myself, it's a power point, they're funding for Christmas lights events has to go through arts and events. Who have the staffing and who are resolved to source, the threat securities, threat health and safety, et cetera, et cetera, to run this event. In order to run it, they are asking the town council to match fund it. Um, and that is what we're discussing tonight.
I was going to say, that's two thousand pounds, it's guaranteed for, yeah, for the next three years.
No, we'll put it back to two thousand.
This year.
Basically, the way my old would be looking at me, obviously, I can't tell you what's going to happen next year and the year after, and the year after, and the year after that. But I, my, 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 what I'm trying to do is make sure that there's money in my budget that goes into the sacred Christmas lights switch on every year, that's what I aim for. If my budgets get cut, then that's nothing to do with my involvement, to do with the administration, by the way, things would have to be reviewed. But as it is, as my budget stands, I'll be Christmas for that.
And no money's taken from the T C T, they'll, they'll, they'll get the extra, they'll get what they'd be getting.
The town, the town's team, the, um, the, the officers, they, they, no money coming from them. They've still got their budget, I've got my sort of budget.
So, thank you, um, actually, I, I hope this is the right time, because, um, we can be all around in circles here. Uh, and I know that we've got a long evening, I, I wish I had a vote that we matched fund, obviously, for.
We, we have one proposal on the table for the moment, and we're just get, we're still at the point of discussing, um, around a proposal not to match fund it, which was proposed by councillor McRae and second by councillor Lawton. If discussion of that particular motion is complete, we'll take that motion now. Mister Chairman, um, are we happy with that, is the discussion still going on around this? Can I just add that the event will still go ahead if we don't go, these gentlemen? The event, me going ahead, I think that's probably, it depends, you have.
I would have to take, if, if, if you decided you were working on it, I would have to go back and, and, and think about it, but.
But could, could the T C T still go ahead?
I can say that the, the money that's, that, that the town's management team at Rockstone has will not be going into the sacred Christmas lights on, which on, because that money is for them to use for economic development. The money that I've sized is the money, is basically, it should have been my team, it should never have been the town's management team, because it's not very, they're not a very.
So if you don't do it, it won't go ahead?
Well, no, because I mean, if councillor McRae and whoever it is, business unit, would want to go ahead, I would not have to stop.
Oh, so of course you'll go ahead, you put out your money.
Yeah, it's in your budget.
Okay, Mister Chairman, can I, can I just clarify this? Roxton Borough Council, please tell me, I've got this right, Roxton Borough Council have allocated funding towards the Christmas lights switch on to the arts and events team, not through economic development. So economic, so town centre team would not be able to use the money in economic development for that event.
Yeah, we can.
Not Roxton Borough, Mister Chairman, if Roxton Borough Council says that the funding for Christmas lights has to go through arts and events, it has to go through arts and events, and the money's the town cent, the money the town centre teams throughout have is for economic development, it needs to be used for economic development. And if our council are not seeing that funding as Christmas lights event, they would sanction funding for that. Therefore, they are looking for it to be done through arts and events, that's how I'm reading it, the local government office.
Yeah, I've got it on it.
Um, so if you don't match fund it, my understanding is that it's a two K you've set aside for it. Well, you won't get much for two K, and your health and safety will be very jeopardised for an event like that. I think that's.
Even if you've got two grand already, and then put that towards the money the town team's got, they've got plenty more than we've never spent two grand on a Christmas event anywhere.
Town team, if we're talking about town centre management team, they aren't involved in Christmases yet.
But as far as I've been told, it's not even been agreed at committee at Roxton Borough Council yet.
Yes, it's operational decision, it's not, uh, supposed to be committed, it's operational thing within the departments. Um, it, it makes complete common sense.
The town team had ring fence money and started organising the Christmas event for this year, we've already booked Santa.
I can't comment on that, I'm not just talking to the town team, I will report back if we can have a think. But I think, Mister Chairman, you have to look at it as, this is a decision by Roxton Borough Council, they have allocated the funding through this particular budget head for the Christmas events and all other events, as I understand. Um, when you work for a large authority, when the pot of money at the beginning of the year is broken down by the finance director, it is allocated to the different departments, and the budget heads are going to much change, I have budget heads here and here that I have to spend money on. So I couldn't take money, for example, from, um, the administration and spend it in sector number seven, or spend money from the west side on running costs. It's a similar thing, the borough council have allocated the funding for Christmas events to arts events. Yep, yeah, thank you. So technically, if the town centre team were to go with a bill to Shane Ward for a Christmas event, whoever was dealing with the payment, they would look and say, why are you presenting this to me, this shouldn't be coming through your budget head. That is how I understand this being designed.
Well, I would withdraw that proposal there, and then obviously I can't vote on it, I would care in interest as being a member of the town team, so.
That's fine, are you happy with that, seconded? Yeah, thank you, it is all to do with the local government finance, we should be credit for complete management. David, you wanted to make a proposal, sorry, I was a little. Right, we now have a second motion, and it's a motion proposed by David, we match funds, talking about two thousand. Do we have a second if there are, over the table?
I, I, I would certainly, because, I mean, okay, it's not going to be quite two thousand, they have our own little bits, I'll watch it one side. Uh, but I, I was, what I would like to say is, that we say to a maximum of two thousand pounds, um, and perhaps if, if there are things that happen while this is doing, you don't exactly need two thousand, but I would say, maybe let's make it up to a maximum. Uh, because I'm mindful, come on, I, I know what the budget could be like, and how much you could have on it. I reckon you could have on probably one percent, one and a half.
I can't comment at this point, Mr. Chairman.
No, well, I'm, that's my, that's my whole game, having known what the budget was like last year, so I'm mindful of doing that, up to two thousand pounds. If you suddenly have to get a windfall and you say, well, we'll be okay with fifteen hundreds, then we'd be very grateful, and I would also like that, that. I, I think it's important to be able to see through this town department, um, because we've never been involved, because we're invested money in it, then I think the town council should be involved in it, or maybe the town council should be involved in that. Sorry for going on with that proposal, that's seconded.
We have this proposal, but just, Adrian wants to speak regarding this proposal. What if we match fund? Put that, you definitely have to do, should you have two thousand?
Well, you can't something of the scale of what we've had previous years, I mean, a thousand pounds doesn't go very far. It just means a very much a scary town, I'm not saying you can't do it, but then you pretty much have nothing on you.
If I tell you it cost, well, last year it cost nearly nine hundred pounds, just closed the road for two hours for a man and somebody. And, of course, this year, yeah, I'm sure they're waiting, I'm coming in at all, but, so please bear the mind we've got a ride. Obviously, David said we're going, yeah, match up to a maximum of two thousand pounds. Obviously, because we're, we're going to have a say on that, so then surely we can come back to it and see how we've got along. And if you, if things go well, we can then make that decision back, we will and we need.
That's what I suggested.
It's hard to match.
I mean, it's, it's really good, but it's how much value would you put on a Christmas lights, or how much do you think the population is to take for cost of value?
Yeah, we can find out, if you, the money people need, who, who's in the, we, we might need, we could actually do it, but it's going to be cheaper for you, if you let.
Yeah, yeah.
By talking with.
By, yeah, that's the thing, if they're local, if they're local suppliers, that we can get, I, I'm looking to do things, not cheap, but cost effective. So it's, it's very make sure that, and to be honest, rather keep the money within the area, if possible, so.
So, yes, Mister Chairman, if I'm to match fund two thousand, that way you shouldn't pay yourself being hit with any extra bills. I think, Mister Chairman, through, it would be useful for the production team perhaps what two thousand pounds is being used for. For members, clarity is really important, it's different.
To put it in context, um, the money that's committed from Eastwood, they don't commit any more than they have to do. I might put whatever I think with my budgets in there, sometimes it's more, so for example, you're talking sometimes up to ten, twelve thousand pounds. Um, so if I perceive that there's something that needs additional, I'll, I'm, if I have money in the budgets, I will spend that money for my budget. Um, and that's the advantage of working with the others, because I have got budgets that do move around through the year, and as I get closer to the end of the year, I might have more money for the event, so I might get some more money to take from Moindal, for example. But that is something that comes as an advantage if we're working in this way, in this partnership way with the match funding. I'm not saying it's always going to be match funded, I'd love it was, we say to start with this two thousand, if we're a bit, sees that that's a benefit, we'll be able to do the same next year, I will still put on the event. If it comes to five, six thousand, that would be coming out of my budget, not the additional bit, it won't be much, much funnier.
Mister Chairman, you have before you proposed the second proposal, that we match fund this event up to a maximum of two thousand pounds. Can I put a couple of numbers, please? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, those against two, I think, A of the sessions, I'm, so, I'm, I'm, councillor McRae, I'm looking at.
He's the smart one over there.
I was a bit pressed, I'm sorry. Um, can I say then that the town council has agreed to match fund to match fund to the.
I just wanted to say one thing, like I said, I might still do a good event, we always do. Have we said that we're going to put someone from the town council on the steering group for your thing? Could I propose it's caller as a new member?
Mister Chairman.
She's very good at organising events.
Mister Chairman, we will get a formal invitation from Roxton Borough Council with regard to this matter, and I will bring it to the attention of the town council, and it will be called town council deciding the event list to this.
You may not, you may, you may.
Maybe officer Lake.
Maybe one or two, but that much.
And maybe officer Lake, I hope you're at this point that has decided, you know, like, you will be in. Please, uh, there's, please, we will, you will be informed of this matter, and it will be signed by the town council. Thank you very much, I'll, I'll be.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's going to be a hard time, that's just.
Mister Chairman, and, and thank you very much for your patience, but I'm sure you'll appreciate that was a very important item. Um, Christmas lights are made to stay in the calendar in Stapleford, and also we have to look at our budgets very carefully. Um, we'll take the items forward and put them up to streets now, and potentially, Mister Barry, I'd like to make a statement. Could you please state your name and your address, make your statement, we've got three minutes.
I have a game, Brookhill Street, yes, Brookhill, yes, Brookhill Town Council, Brockham Town Council. Are you aware?
Yes, you'd like to come forward?
That's one new thing.
Well, that, first of all, thank council, great, we listen to the agenda for the meeting. And, uh, as you know, Brookhill Street is fast becoming a deathbed in two hours. I thought that tomorrow night, there's a serious accident on the street. Fortunately, nobody was badly injured, two cars were ripped off, might property damage. Um, the residents, I, I, I say, I speak for myself now, we're demanding now that something is done about Brookhill Street with regard to the speed of traffic going up there, and the weight of vehicles coming down there.
Yeah.
Twenty-three years ago, roughly, we had speed, uh, reduction, uh, weight reduction on that street of seven and a half tonne. Go to the dock of Brookhill, sign telling drivers that they cannot go with over seven and a half tonne is as they are approaching the street. Not twenty-five, fifty metres back, anybody with any even turning onto the street, they've got their chance, they've got to see it. So that one's all clear. But regarding the speed up and down the street, there's someone that's in there to rattle, and it is a rattle. And we want something done about it now, I'm disappointed that cows from that store are with you a lot in the public gallery. The place should be average, the N C C should be get something done about it. And it is plain that an accident, you waited to happen. Two, probably two years ago, I know you got killed on the street, that was nothing to do with bad driving, it was a pure accident, but that is one, two matter. And I say now, and I can't, I won't speak for everybody, because no way does that speak to speak for them, I'm speaking for myself, that we want something doing about it, we're not. That we want something doing about it, we're not asking, or I'm not asking, I'm mildly, that something is doing that.
Mr Chairman, and just to reiterate what I said earlier, the status of town council is not the highway authority, and town council committee knows that, the former town council. And all the town council can do is ask the county council, they cannot take the actions themselves, that is all they can do, and I do. Ask you to bear in mind, this is not the highway authority.
I did say that, yeah, I did say that, it is NCC.
The highway authority are responsible for the highways. We're going to move on to the next item now, interest of the player, the councillor Rice, and the councillor Darby.
It's the next item now.
Next item.
Hang on, hang on. Can we just, quick clarification?
Yeah, I'd like to hear what we actually discuss the item now, rather than later, having a.
Now, councillor Rice, the player tonight, an interest of this item, that's councillor Darby. At this point, we'll have to, we'll pass town there to take the chair, the councillor, Mr Commander Hall, to pass town where we take the chair for this item.
Right, okay, so Brookhill Street, all roads will be eleven.
That our council will play first, please.
All right, obviously, the guys said a bit here, right. So far, there's 347 people, most of them live on Brookhill or around there, that have signed a petition online, asking Nottinghamshire County Council Highway Department to take action on the traffic management of Brookhill Street, Stapleford. Some suggestions from residents on there, and this isn't all you can do, these are just suggestions, obviously, we're open to other suggestions, and we do want people to join in the consultation. Some suggestions from residents on the road of being, install speed cameras either end of Brookhill Street, install speed bumps, some residents have said don't, and some have said do, like I said, this is just ideas. Some people have said make it one way, but we definitely want other ideas from people. The petition is going to be presented by Notts County Council, to Notts County Council, by one of our councillors in September, they kind of offered to do that. So what I'm asking Stapleford Town Council to do, is contact the highways department and ask, they actually come out, via email or this, that and the other. We want them actually to come to Stapleford and walk around the street. And look, not only Brookhill Street, but Derby Road in general, because it's well known that people are avoiding the high street due to the speed bumps. They're going up Tooton Lane, down Brookhill Street, up Brookhill Street, down Tooton Lane. The speed bumps is a big problem, but it's not just removing them, it's looking at all the traffic management systems, which is what we need them to do to sort something out, same as they do on Brookhill Street. So what, what we've agreed to do, because obviously, there's a lot of people here, somebody's put a leaflet through all the doors, which some of you have seen, which, which it was, I'm not saying it's worded wrong, but they didn't say who done it, and they've invited people to talk, and they can't, they shouldn't have done that. So what we're going to do is organise a public meeting on a Monday, which is fine venue, where if people want to come, they can. We'll make sure that things are through the door, so they're all right. And, and, just me and Mandy talking about it earlier, we'll, we'll make sure everyone's aware, we'll do a public meeting, we'll come along, and it's an open meeting, so people, you know, there's no, you can't talk, you can't, we want to listen to people. We're going to invite highways to come, fingers crossed, getting them to come out, because they don't like coming to Stapleford. We're going to invite the county councillors to come. And so what I'm asking Stapleford Town Council to do is write, like I said, write to the highways department, tell them that, you know, as the representatives of the people of Stapleford, we want them to come out and look at it, and, you know, it'd be nice if you could do that kind of stuff.
Mr Chairman, that sounds excellent, can I offer you, can we send a free charge to, for your public meeting, if you would like?
Thank you.
If you're there with me.
Yeah, of course, yeah, we'll sort something out, and then we'll make sure they're listening to say they are.
Yeah, I'm sure we can manage to have a copy of people's, I mean, okay.
Thank you.
I see no reason why we can't actually do that, and write, and suggest us a study. I think one of the things, the only thing, just to put the council on the ballgame, is I think, yes, it needs talking out. I've lived here virtually all my life, and Brookhill has always been a rattle, and even before the humps were there, it's always been a clog. One of the problems of the humps have obviously affected that, and we've got much more traffic than we used to have forty years ago. So that's, obviously, it has made the problem worse. I think it's quite sensible that we actually request that they come and look, whether they will, it's not a ballgame, but I'd suggest that we write and suggest that they have a look at Brookhill in particular. I know there are views about the humps on Nottingham Road. I will say, if we have asked and asked that independently, that is, the county council, the council always said, they will not reduce or take down the weight, because it reduces the fatalities on, and accidents on the Oxford Road. We must bear that in mind. The other thing I would say is, it's not to say, "We want this, we want that", one of the things you ought to have, let's say, if, if they come and look at it and decide to do something, it will be what the county council say. It's not to say, "We want humps or we want this", if they decide there is something what's going, they're fine, but I am quite happy to do that, I think it's quite sensible, that we actually write and ask them to come and look at it. I would warn you that probably, from experience, trying to get a county council officer anything in the evening is usually no chance. I would hope they would come, but do bear that in mind. That is just a word of advice, I know from the fact they will not come out. But if we can get them down there to look at it, and then hopefully speak back to that meeting, I would suggest we try. If we, if you're going to organise a public meeting, which is, I would suggest perhaps we can try and see if we can get them to come. And at least say that we've got some feedback before that public meeting. Or alternatively, hold a public meeting to give some force to it, and then we'll hold it all the way late to give feedback. And I suggest we could do that at another public meeting perhaps.
I mean, I just, I don't actually speak on Brookhill Street itself, but I'm speaking as a local councillor. I know nothing about this petition at all. You know, I'd like to know what, it's gone through a fellow councillor, and why, why didn't, what's it been for? So John told me to speak to you, sorry.
Oh, Mr Chairman, it's nothing to do with the state of the town council, I was going to take that up at Rockford Borough Council, we should have played Philip Horstfield, because after that.
Would I have a representative?
Yes, I'm telling the councillor, you're Rockford, you're the Rockford Borough Council Board Councillor, if an issue was that, you need to speak to Rockford Borough Council for that. I'm sorry, I can't help with that, because I can only do what the people of the town care.
Okay.
I'll take councillor on, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. When you cross the road at Donbrooke, where you're taking off into, into Ernham, to believe me, I was crossing here from the middle until the west end later tonight, he's very dangerous there. It might be that I did, I knew that everybody quiet, and try and get more refugees at the bottom of there, because I've tried several times in the past. And county councillors, councillors, as I said, so somehow I just throw dead. We must spend a thousand pounds, town's money, this is history, a town's money, on attempting to get the speed bumps removed, which is terrible failure, of course. That's some of the history of past what this town council's been involved in, in trying to avenge a lot of these problems. Now it's like it's come to a crunch, so hopefully, eventually, hopefully, the next year, something might be done. But I do see, as you get the pressure up at those points, oh, oh, what to do, but they're very quite right. In years, could be a bigger, a bigger level of luck, I mean, I've been down here for a few, few years. So when the county council highways will come and do something, I don't know, but I express to try hard to do something. We will tend to support all this, we'll try and support the ticket, and we'll make other committees are involved in it. Thank you.
Mr Chairman, pardon, sorry, Madam Chairman, pardon, clarification. If I can just say, I will write to Nottingham County County Council, was giving me the flavour of this meeting this evening, and how concerned local residents are, I will copy in the county councillors also, and the other standings, this petition that we wanted to make about, however, is going to be presented to county council in September. Town council will be more than happy to give you these premises for a public meeting, if you can give me a date, so I can organise staffing, and I can lay out some refreshments for you as well, and the organisers of that public meeting will invite the highway department, and county councillors to that event. Have I summed that up?
Yeah.
You've got.
Quickly, quickly, in base of. The ball's holding in there. Can we also stress that when they look at Brookhill, it is not during the school holiday?
It is, yeah.
They do have the habit of doing this ballgame, and doing a nine-foot survey after, and saying all this other trouble. So can we actually stress on that letter that it is not done during the school holiday of any sort?
I prefer it be during the time, during the school run time.
Yeah, accident, didn't even happen during the day.
We haven't seen anything a little bit painful, please let your councillor after it, if I think maybe you're going to find that we're stressed after the site, just let people go to wish, and.
And let all the others, that's.
Right.
Excellent, then people can book home anybody who wants.
I'll take councillor Brannan, goes and then councillor Brannan.
Thank you, thank you very much. Actually, yes, I do feel very sorry for the residents of Brookhill Street, for the simple reason is, it has been going on a long time, and we know that the county highways and the council lot have had been on there many times. We have not got anything done, as you well know, and I hope that with this meeting that councillor Richard McGrave is putting together here, is a very good thing, and I'll support anything that makes Brookhill Street a lot better than what it is now. And councillor, the leader of the council was quite right, when he says, you know, during interim time, not, not summer time. It is something, and it is a dangerous road, and I understand that some of the vehicles that are heavy, which the gentleman was talking about earlier, and a lot of the weights of certain vehicles have been changed by the government, and I couldn't tell you what they are. Thank you.
One for Ernham, councillor Brannan stressing letters, if more power for us, all of us signing, more letter in.
No, if I send the letter to the town council, if anyone would like to write independently to Notts County Council by all means, that would have more weight than a letter with a whole signature on it, because it would probably be done by you. So I would write, send it as proper officer of this council on behalf of Stapleford Town Council.
Yeah, I wanted to emphasise that, so whilst signing petitions are wonderful, it is much more powerful if you could bombard the county council individually, even if it is all of you writing the same letter, but sending it individually, it will carry a lot more weight. It always does, so if people are prepared to actually, or perhaps if Richard would even like to send people a template or put it on his website, that he, that he could do, but individual letters are much better than petitions. Petitions fine, but if you, if they've suddenly got 300 letters on their desk, that will take a lot more notice than one petition.
Good one, Mr Chairman, as I mentioned, also support petitions, because the petition is presented by whichever county, which we can't have, it's like Mr Williams. And to a council meeting, the fact that there are also, you've had a good or whatever number of letters in support of this petition, it shows this isn't just someone who's gone around and said, "Sign this", it does carry a lot more weight, it's council premium.
Yeah, just wanted to ask, will you be, and the fact that you also are powerful, we can be able to see this thing to that, so we can say.
Copy it, I don't copy a human in, I'll be in the minutes, I can attach it, I can attach it. It has to go around, it's quite frankly, it has to go around eighteen people for a letter, it'll never get sent. So what happens is, I will discuss it with the leader of the council, as per usual, and then, if you wish, I can attach it, copy in the minutes.
And, so I could just add, stop us off, if any individual councillor have got particular things that they feel should be mentioned, if you want to, I'd ring down me and my, either myself or Margaret, then when I'm not going to look at that crap, let's. We can take those up, or if you, you know, if something should occur to you after this meeting, "Hang on, we really all meant this", then myself and the town, I'm quite happy to look at that and make sure that any of that, that that's included. And equally, from everyone, anyone here as well, if you wish to either email me or the town, then we would also be quite happy to look at that and try and include, not individual suggestions, but yeah, if you would like to do that, but, say, going back to the original thing, individual letters are brilliant, if you can sit down and do those.
Any further questions?
One for, which name should we send it to?
Sorry?
Is there a name to send it to?
We'll find out in a while.
I know who it was yours.
I'm sure if we find out, it's not the neighbours here, that the officer should go to, I'm sure Mr McGrave can put it on his website. I'm quite happy to enter it on the website.
Laura?
Yeah.
Laura.
And it's a bad move thing now, or whatever it is.
I just wanted to come forward. And Madam Chairman, like you've given, I know a lot of people here, and they'd like to forward the document, because it was five minutes, we said, let's keep this.
Very long, when you ask.
Yeah. It could be, you know, come back to you, it could be five minutes.
Can I, can I just say, now you've, you've stopped, because it's civil, please. The town first councillor, the highest former governor, you've got to admit, understanding, you've been serving people until the end of your meeting, so these people.
And then I, I better want to introduce the government, we can invite them, but we cannot present upon it.
If you don't stop, that tells you a lot, you wasted your time.
Just hang on, David. There's a queue, there's a queue, go on, you're all right now.
Yeah, no, who don't? Nor, Nor Trussler.
Nor Trussler.
Pay now?
Anyone today, Nor Trussler? As a person to write to, yeah. More letters on the desk, more papers.
Didn't open the windows beforehand because of the noise, you know, it's too noise, and we'd leave them also to get the noise. Switch the fan off, look, I'm sorry, I just had you on.
Everybody speak up.
Yes, Mayor Gates, Mr Chairman, you should have a front to view, the Mayor Gates, I've just been hiding a few comments before this, and there's a sheet on it. Can I thank my lovely girlfriend, Brenda Lafferty, again, for coming out to a couple of events, and taking photographs. The Saxon Cross event, which was organised by Rockford Borough Council, supported by Stapleford Town Council, which was great fun, it was a really worthwhile event. I'd like to thank Brenda for coming out and taking photographs, and there's a display outside, and also like, thank you for going to William Lily's speck, and Mo and Jan for a long time, it was a pleasure to be there that day, and it was delightful to meet up with not only Chris, but Marion Hill, who's former town councillor and past mayor, councillor Pearson, and it may be your only opportunity to see councillor Pearson in photograph.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. Everybody knows, I tried to avoid.
No, I just, I just wanted to be also in the next one, which was the plaques, which again, Dr Lafferty assisted me with on that event. Town council has supported the blue plaque scheme, we have promoted the events in Stapleford, and I was delighted that they also went to that event. We know there were a number of past mayors, again, fabulous events, and councillor Pearson also did a photograph. Lots of things coming up.
Well, I, I attended about three events. The first one was to plan for the town, what was very enjoyable, and we were through there, so a part of it.
And it was true there, so I participated in it with a bit. And the second one was in the afternoon. And that was the Golden Wedding. And the couple, they were at our preparation when we were planning 25 years ago. So it was quite fitting. Then I went to a nursery and duty cakes and fancy dress and that. And it was more food, so I, I home, I didn't put anybody in charge.
You're not allowing an extra, extra lap for the nursery.
Mr Mayor, we all know that the city comments of Calais are free. I'm sure Mr, the county, Mr Hall will be there. There's one or two things coming up and I'm going to ask you to support those. And that Stapleford Play Day, County Better Girl Around the World has now been cancelled. The home is going to be arranged because it's over the summer, but the agenda's already been dispatched before we see who cases that. What things coming up, please support them. And other things that are not on this list because it came in after the agenda's dispatched. So please keep an eye on what's happening. And we've made the argument of this to, I know Mr Hall's great on judging it. And the award will be in the next town council meeting. Please come along prior to the town council meeting if you want to. Thank you.
Right, the next action on the agenda is the annual town parish meeting. And it's going to need feedback from the neighbour of the council.
Do you want to do it?
Well, both of the two of them.
Mr Chairman, councillor Pearson, myself attended this annual meeting. We discussed green spaces, the corridors that have been identified. And that document is available on the side of the website, but I think it's needing a bit of updating again. But like, all these documents, things keep changing on them. And we discussed neighborhood planning, which was great fun for us. And we also looked at pre-set some budgets. And the county council is mindful to maintain the support to us at the present time, however.
The borough council.
The borough council is mindful to support their support to us at the present time, however. They watch at 2019, the city government's support will end the borough. Suppose that was big bow to 2019, because I don't know when, I just, I've no idea, I don't have no idea. So what's the space that we discussed that you're going to understand?
So I loved that space, but what was said, we did try and turn them down, but they said they would review it each year. So who knows, we may get the same amount next year, we may not. They weren't prepared to pin it down, so we did try and pressure them. But they would let us know as soon as possible because they would pressure us enough to get budgets in early. But not do a budget until we know exactly how much they're giving us. I think that was...
They also, there is also a local plan too, and I would suggest that you look at the website for consultation information. I did stress to...
I spoke to them about that.
Yeah, I did stress to, to reply the chief executive that proper consultation, it doesn't seem to be getting over the town. Prior to my colleagues were also in the unit with this. We expect it to look well, so we need to be told with the consultation, and I did stress this.
If I can, if I can just come back on that, I actually spoke to them today about that actual thing. I said, we were told that there will be a consultation July 7th. He said that it will be August. And the consultation will be open until the 21st of September. There wasn't a commitment that it will be on the website. The consultation will be sent out to interested parties, i.e. town councils generally, and neighbour running steering groups. That will be sent out to us. Assuming when Margaret gets it, I will ask her to circulate it to all councillors when we know what the whole game is. They were very non-committal on it. I think the other thing that we could add, well, actually I can say to the rest of the neighbour of the town council.
Also, I would say, I will personally amend with that.
I'm not moving.
Has there been anything else that wants to bring?
Thank you, David.
Co-senatee, so co-senatee, Mr Chairman, I attended the last meeting, the co-senatee. An honour of my items discussed at that point, retail turning, free wifi in the town. The dimension of the Christmas event, but it was pointed out by, I've come to the town centre manager at that point, that Rockford Council would be taking over throughout the event, as was discussed this evening. And I understand that Mr Hall would be speaking with Mr Khan. I'm not quite sure what that was about exactly, but I imagine it was what input the town centre team would have. I am attending a town centre team meeting next week, so I'll come back at next town council for that. And it's the free wifi, it's, I don't know, we were supposed to sort that out, weren't we? And assuming we always say that. Oh, you did, yeah, oh, yeah. The heat and joy. Free wifi, they were, they were still, I think the ten was on at last time, but it's Mark that's trying to pull some. It's okay, I should say, there are problems with Stapleford with wifi. And the meeting's like in a horse and jockey, I couldn't pick anything off them at all at all. They're trying to pick up stuff that they were talking about and none of us could actually. So there are issues within Stapleford, but they are, as I said, anything I will report back to you on it. With regards to Harry's baskets, as I reported at the last town council meeting, the town centre team had no success in raising sponsorship to the businesses for this item. And Alice stood through, as I say, asked me to sign for a meeting of one major retailers in the town, which I did. And she has never got back to me, but given the things that have been happening, I can quite see it probably wasn't our best priority. And given she's the former business minister, I don't look anything back on that one. Hanging back, it's all come up again as part of the budgetary process. But given the fact that you've committed 2,000 tonight, 2,300 at the last meeting, I certainly am not losing my breath on this one, but it will come as part of the budgetary process. Something for you all to go to the fore. Thank you. If anyone wants to ask me anything or want to bring anything up with the town centre team, please let me know. Look, Mr Chairman, you've got a short report for me for noting. If anyone wants to ask me anything, I'm going to have to answer. Vacancies keep changing because we keep letting them, but people keep getting them off as well. Realizing how much work's involved, different things happening. But at the moment, we're doing our best to get them off. People now understand that it's only two now, we can't hold, we've had two left for since the last meeting, which is good. So hopefully, I don't expect someone to open till the... Biggest wrong. Richard?
I'm sorry. Right, one of the previous meetings we had, we requested if we could write to the county council and see if it puts on kind of clearway outside our allotments or pasture. I just wondered if we'd had any feedback from them about that.
I was, I was thinking that the county council could assume that on, I mean, what? To traffic transport?
Yes, yeah.
I was not given to traffic transport.
It was on the last, sorry, it was on the last traffic transport meeting.
I was thinking, effectively, if I'd spoken to county councillors, but that group, they're not in direct, it's the sensible way to, to do it. Rather than two of us going through it.
Yeah, the last thing about the allotment says, getting loads of complaints again about the hedge on you and on lady. If there's any chance that when it's called...
Yes, in hand, I've spoken to Paul Summers, Rockford Borough Council.
Can they, can they cut it really tight as possible because it's second or three quarters of the path of the minute.
Mr Chairman, as you are aware, cutting the hedges over the summer is a difficult issue. I have spoken with Paul Summers with regard to, we're having a dance with the borough council so that if anyone starts complaining about it, less being interrupted, it's not only him that's going to get the flag, the Rockford Borough Council will get the flag as well. It's getting done as a project.
Brilliant, thank you.
Absolutely brilliant. Yes, we have this every year, councillor, about the Heding and Park arrangement. There's nothing we can do until the right time and Brock will deal with it. And, and, and over the last 10, 12 years, that I know of, it comes up every year.
Over the last 20 years, Mr Chairman, if there's a time that is still...
And if I may, regarding allotments and all the work that goes on in the office, through people wanting allotments, giving them up, getting them checked, and they do site visits, I think that the staff do a extremely good job because they change it from one month to another. And I think, I reckon, have that limited, I think it's right that we get very self of that. It will in the end, but it's...
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Ask for the edge on the view on, and one of you will be established, so I'll leave it to you, David. Good luck.
We've got council, we've got council board, I said, we've got... But the hedges, if it is an ongoing issue, can we not put it right back every year? Because it is ridiculous, every year it's the same. Everybody said it's an ongoing thing, I'm not quite sure.
Every year.
Can I just put, as I said, for a minute, because every year that the hedge is cut back as far as it can be cut back, the more you cut them down, and the earlier you cut them back, the more they will grow. If you were to take that hedge away, you would need to be fenced with palisade fencing. That would not be acceptable to local residents, it also would not be good for the allotment site. It is a healthy safety issue, isn't it? I mean, we've got pictures of people on scooters not being able to get past, on wheelchairs not being able to get past. It's the same thing every year. Yeah, as I say, it is in time, it will be dealt with when it can be dealt with. As I say, if to take that hedge, the only thing to do is to take that hedge away completely, which would not be acceptable to local residents, it would not be acceptable to the allotment holders. And to put palisade fencing in on that site, I shudder to think that how much it would cost. And it would not be acceptable to people living on it, and it's not good for to take away an ancient platform gate, basically. For people grabbing difficulties, might I suggest you use the other side of the road. Sometimes you can't to rock curves, I, I actually used a scooter, mobility scooter recently. And if you already aren't very good with that, rock, you still can. You're welcome to rock curves. I had sixteen years of it for my, it's actually very difficult to it, but if you do have to plan your route to, and people who use wheelchairs and wheel scooters regularly, do you have plans routes that they use for easy access?
I'd like to mention vessel lane, because again, because not only is it on foot and back, two, people want to turn it up, move it out of the middle of the path. And lorries pop down the side, so it's important to get through. If anyone walked that down there, and they, I went down there the other day and I could not get through, I took around the lorry.
Mr Chairman, again, it is, it is a ongoing issue. The hedge will be cut. As soon, as soon rather than later, as soon as we can get them cut, we can get them cut, believe you me, because of the amount of work it creates. With regards to telegraph call, we cannot get it moved, it's as simple as that, that's where it is.
Well, it's a bit cold down.
It's not my problem, we're doing things to stay as we can. As for parking of lorries up and down vessel lane, this has been complained about for at least the last 20 years and before. And it's, I know the county councils have also taken this aboard. And...
He said the health and safety problem, now, after what has happened.
Again.
They're using the bushes.
Well, again, this is not a highly disordered, we need to speak again to not county council regarding this. To county council.
Just, Tom, I thought for me, when they test you, yes, you pick up, not that they're watching.
Okay, but then, however, can I just say, I would do...
All you guys can help with.
Can I just say, I'm going to be doing tree inspection this year as well, so for the lot that's built for trees. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other planning?
Yes, Mr Chairman, we're good planning, right, we did. We held a meeting on Tuesday night. Tuesday night? Tuesday night, I lost track of days this week, I've been out two nights, I'm losing track of which night, which you think which. And went very successful in the manner of these events. It was reasonably well-attended, much better than I thought it was. We've managed to get a core group of people to add to our own core group who wish to be involved with the steering committee. We've also managed to get a number of people to sign up to be involved with working parties for that steering committee. I am, will still be around this evening, I was working on the terms and conditions for the Heding Plan. And those will be discussed very soon. There's a meeting we call the 25th of August, an initial meeting, all these people who express their interest. And they will see the terms and conditions, they will see what roads they need to go down. And I would like to attend that meeting, but I believe the council will be there. And at that meeting, hopefully, the chairman will be late in the bounce, chairman, if someone is going to take responsibility for this event. I will be passing around a piece of paper to you this evening. And on that piece of paper, it will show all the town councillors, and next to it, any key for neighbourhood plan core member, or it's Mrs Mannehall, neighbourhood plan, she signed up to be involved as well, was all by the core member. So if you're interested, still to facilitate people to do this, if you're interested, please put your name on there. However, I do stress that it is a tiny commitment. You must, there is a tiny commitment involved in this. And it's no use people signing up, coming to one meeting and then returning for six months or whatever. You need to be wholly involved and committed to what we're doing on this one. Also, I have, I'll shoot a paper, one says housing allocation, green belt and environment. Another one says town centre, retail business, commerce and industrial, community and leisure, and AHS to transport. And I'm asking people if they're interested in being involved with the working parties and that. And what will happen is, these working parties will look at, now, these issues, the names may change once the actual steering committee get together, but this is an initial start off. If you're interested in being involved in these areas, put your name on them, please. But again, I stress there's tight commitments involved, and you need to be willing to attend the meetings and to do the work involved on presenting plans and documents relating to this work, so that we can pull together to create a, at least a neighbourhood plan sooner rather than later. Rockford Borough Council, Dennis Saunders turned up, following an invite, council meeting, stepped in all the support of the town council and was very good at explaining what was needed. But he's looking for a draft plan for Christmas, which is a tall order. At the county council meeting, county council meeting last night, Ruth Hyde spoke about wanting all the parishes to have something perhaps to build together with local plan two. Again, a tall order, but they are, as I asked her, who did say draft comments, and she said yes. So basically, we're looking at a draft plan before Christmas, which is why we need to respect that work. I do apologize if we've been saying that one. But I'm going to pass these around, or you go out, or you... I'll leave them out, so before you go this evening, if you could, or if you think about it later and feel inclined, please let me know. Thank you very much, I think the new ones will be something.
Yeah, I just want to add a few things, I saw it there. I've been to, well, it should have been five workshops in the last whole night. Especially last, last week, I talked to that. And talked to the first one, which was on the natural environment space, I could get to. It's definitely, you know, on a particular juice deep, it was totally quid pro quo, it was impossible to get out. However, I think, just briefly, one on the green belt, design and heritage, employment and retail, and housing in community facilities. Now, I'm sorry, I'm not going to talk back on them all, because I've got about 10 pages of notes here. The note, the actual notes, Martin British is going to mention them all, the website, so they will be available. I will try and jot down some things when I've got time. I will try and jot down some things when I've done the time, it's appreciated. Uh, I was in a meeting this Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and like the town clerk, I've been tired three evenings as well. So I just haven't had the time to put some summaries there, but, um, I have got those subnotes, and I would like to try and put them to a pertinent point rather than just waiting for Mark to reach. As soon as I can sit down and collect what I think are the important bits that are going towards the part two level plan. There is also going to be in October, a site-specific workshop as regards allocations. In other words, what better your green belt than what I build on? Probably lovely. Um, I did also get from Stefan, David. They are looking at actually giving us, instead of anybody who knows the core strategy, instead of us having this urban centre, they are looking at actually giving figures for the individual bits, so for instance, Stapleford, Brown Court, Hamper, whatever, and making the site specific. They're doing October, uh, but the view to them, we're doing a plan by Christmas, which is partly why we're saying Christmas. Because they're looking to get it done. Their timetable is Gaff Bar Plan for jobs in Economy Committee, January two thousand and seventeen. So this is why, if we're going to get something around at the neighborhood plan, it's never thinking, well, we'll get it all by next summer, we could buy the next summer. It's far too late, Brock, they've made their decisions anyway. So we really do need to get the thing around, make that prepared to give time and get it worked on. And it is going to be a lot of work. Uh, I don't think there's that. Um, yeah.
Preach it.
All right. I've just written some stuff down, because of course I forget what I want, like, oh. At a meeting I attended last night, councillor Philip Powin said the same thing he said last, this time last year, get on with the neighborhood plan. Not all have nearly completed their plan, we haven't even started one yet. At the meeting held on Wednesday, if you take away councillors, members of political groups, town team members, two residents from Rockhampton and one from Totun, there was only actually three members of the public who turned up. And despite a leaflet that went out in the recent by-election, which said on it, information regards neighborhood plan would be available on their website, at the town council website. The only place that had information was the State for Community group website. But since then, it has appeared on the town council website, but no one else was bothered to share this information. But I just think, out of eighteen town councillors, only five attended on Wednesday, obviously there's different reasons why. But, but previous discussions, or anyone around this table showed, had the interest. And we've only been allowed to see the, and we have not been allowed to see the responses from the public from the consultation leaflet that was sent out. And I've spoken to loads of people that's doing neighborhood plans in other areas, and all of them have seen the responses from the public at the neighborhood plan, because it has to be open, honest and transparent, and that's just not happening. Names of individuals on the leaflets could have been redacted, but I don't recall a question on the questionnaire that asked if people didn't want their responses shared with others. As I've already said, the plan is supposed to be open, honest and transparent. Stapleford is such a strategic location with so much to offer, central to Nottingham Derby, near the tram, and right next to, in fact, the gateway to the proposed H S two station. Stapleford has so much opportunity and could become what Beeston once was. Unfortunately, we're just being let down, and I just think there's a lack of interest and vision for the town. The Stapleford Neighborhood Plan should be near completion and ready to hand into Brock's council towards part two of the local plan, which last night they said would like to finalize publication, draft part two local plan in November, December this year. It's not given us that until we're... We've all been aware of the neighborhood plan and done nothing, nothing for it to get it off the ground till the last year. I mean, I've, I've printed out, I've had maps printed out by Brock's Borough Council, organised a Bimby event, hardly anyone went to, and, and I've bought loads of paperwork down here that we could, I was really hoping we could have used it at the events on Wednesday. It wasn't even put up for people to get involved in. And I think we're just not doing enough to engage with people, because it's a brilliant idea, it really is. And we, we should be way ahead of it now, not just starting it now.
Right, Mr Chair, we treat this year against to do every council meeting. The previous administration, in the neighborhood planning, is quite detailed form to discuss whether we can do it. It was meeting after meeting or it was discussed. And they agreed they were going to go for designation, which they did. And the designation didn't come in until the end of March, which was actually in part a period. Which was actually in part a period. Therefore, the town council could not go anywhere at that point. We had a new administration. Many of the new members of that administration had never been to town councillors before. I can remember the first meeting when neighborhood plan was brought up, most of them didn't know what their thoughts about. And again, we went to it, it was being discussed at several points. If our council at this point were previously said they didn't be involved, they said they would be involved and started running workshops. We drew up a core group of members from each political grouping onto the town council who attended the workshops. From there, and reported back to the town council, we drew up the consultation forms, we set out via the church. I stated the return of steps to the very pointing, given this went to every household, given this went to every business. We agreed at the last town council meeting, the town council was still mindful to go ahead with this, and we would call a meeting prior to this town council meeting. Trying to get the date for that town council meeting was very difficult, given the number of meetings that everyone has to attend, and trying not to pass our council meeting. However, we managed to get the date, it was called. There was a notice up in town council, I did send a publication on our website. As you know, there is no way out of the Brock's Borough Council, things just don't go immediately as we used to. However, I emailed everyone who's expressed an interest in this. I emailed everyone who's on my listing of names addressed to databases, whatever. Every town council was emailed, they were all emailed again to remind them of it. And it's for people to turn up if they wish to. You cannot haul people out. I've had this discussion, particularly left with Brock's Borough Council and the head of planning at Brock's Borough Council with regard to this. And those who have said that you cannot make people be interested. If they're interested, they will come along. I was very pleasantly surprised, the number of people that turned up and went out. And the fact that it was committed for people. You're better with a small number committed than a large number who aren't taking part. If we're mindful to go ahead with it, we have this meeting set up in the twenty third of August. If people attend it, we can see where to go from there. At the meeting last night, I was quite heartened to hear that we would take a draft form. And we'll take it from there.
Uh, fine, just that, uh, just comment on, yeah, very sorry, no. Um, we cited the fact that there was only so many councillors there. Neighborhood plan starts to be driven by, by the community, not the town council. So the town councillors did not have to be there. And now, these two of the councillors have followed down because they can get there. And, but it is up to the community to do it, not councillors. The councillors have not set out the plan. So definitely should be criticizing councillors for not being there. Those who have expressed an interest are involved. Um, as regards all the rest of the thing, yes, not all have got theirs going. I would remind you that possibly much smaller areas than Stapleford. In our discussions with various other councillors from Gaff Bar and other areas, a number of them are struggling. I've been at a meeting today, and Brinsley were muttering, well, if we've got it done by next year, or next summer, we'll be looking. Um, so it isn't just us. Fine, not all start early, have a smaller administration have managed to do that. It also transpired that councillor Powin said that the planning department, Riddick, wrote it forward, uh, which I found rather astonishing, and they're not supposed to be done. However, but there are a number of other councillors doing neighborhood plans that are struggling to keep it going and get it going because of the commitments. And as regards information went out, the people who came to the meeting on Wednesday were those who had already expressed an interest. It was not a recruiting ballgame, it was trying to get people who had expressed an interest and getting them to come together. I feel that we've got enough to work with as long as that number of people are going to show that commitment. Ultimately, whilst I agree entirely what Stapleford is, I've been trying to do as much as I can. But if the people of Stapleford don't care enough to get out and do something, there's not anything much I can do about it. I can't go knocking on doors and playing him away from the television, or out of the pub, or wherever they are. If they really are not, if they've got a real interest in what this town could be, then they should be expressing that and being involved. And I'm sorry, even when we looked at the responses, perhaps we can actually do something, that's responsible, or looking to do that. That's perhaps something that we could have done. But half of those replies that we got were absolutely nothing positive whatsoever. All they were was a set of moments of gratitude. The only thing with neighborhood plan is not complaining, it's look a way forward. And a lot of the responses we got did want to be involved, and all they wanted to do was say, well, this is no good, that's no good, that's no good. It's what we want that's important, not what we got. And if people don't want anything or aren't good enough to be prepared to do it, then I really don't see what more we can do. It is up to the community to do this, not the council. It's our job to oversee it, it is not our job to make the plan order.
Mr Chair, a few points that I also sent to town centre teams, we're very keenly distributed it through all businesses. I did offer to write a piece for the town centre team newsletter, because they didn't want that, or they didn't think it was appropriate. And I kind of see you lost part of it. But the fact that town centre teams send it out to businesses, I was very grateful for. The town cent, the town plan, if you like, neighborhood plan, that is for the neighborhood plan group to drop, not for the town council. What the town council did was send out consultation form, asking people to express an interest in being involved. Now, it is for that group to do their own consultation, be it Starby Monkey, be it turning up with a card, or be it whatever, and asking people they want, want to face, 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 and being involved with them. It's for the neighborhood plan group to do that, not for the town council. All the town councils can do is engage interest, and I'm sorry, you take a horse water, you can't make it drink.
John. Uh, question. Uh, what costs are we in that for neighborhood planning's change?
Um, I... At the moment, yeah, I'm sorry. I don't, I suppose, they have, they have been cost up, clearly, within the general alignment. So far, you've paid, you've spent about thirty hours more per year than you started as a charge for opening a lot.
But the question, it's a lot of costs, but, um, I think we should have thought, if we're teaching this stuff to everybody, if we're going to have it, you might have.
Yeah, right, yes, and...
I don't want to go down that road.
Brock's Borough, Mr Chair, the Brock's Borough council have not decided yet whether they are going to go down that road. No, it says within it that if you have the neighborhood plan, you can get opt twenty five, twenty five percent. Yeah, exactly. But I've now been told, no, it was never guaranteed any, but I've now been told that Brock's Borough council are not necessarily looking to be mindful to go down that road. So don't, please don't think, Monique, that, that isn't why you should be doing it.
No, but, uh...
I have my own view of why...
If it ever happens, which is most unlikely, it wouldn't be good for us and the town, so it's, uh, that well. But of course, it, it's not that I've never been, uh, uninterested in the neighborhood planning. I've been updated a little all the time, or details elsewhere. If I need to, members, uh, here, we'll, we'll not get it, as you know.
As I can see, Mr Chair, this, this, I feel like we do need this planning for the household. It's been good on and on, and I have to say that the drivers of the previous administration are no longer councillors. So you lost the people who were actually pushing for a neighborhood plan. And that is one of the reasons that you've had a delay. You didn't have then to continue to do it. Other times, there was somebody, there was no one driving for it when the previous administration came in.
Because we've always had seen, it's not, the eighteen members, not about sixteen turned up. I've received in the past, yes. Probably, fifty members forward to, to councillor, that's about it, I should be.
I tell you now, if the town, if the neighborhood planning, um, committee is formed purely of town councillors, it will pass. You must have the community and businesses involved. And that is all we want in the issue, looking at, before you spend this money, would you have the people to make it pass the examination? However, I believe this is a big, like, here, and we'd ask them to think about it, of course, again.
What support?
The, the, the thing is that, um, um, town clerk and, um, first of all, my fantasy, I went and, um, the people, well, as the community, not councillor, um, are very positive, but not at the beginning, because obviously, um, things have to be explained to them, which is fair enough. And, um, we got some really good feedback at the end of the evening. Uh, many, there are some people coming on to the pressure meeting, and there are others going to be joining the, um, other sections, uh, or the top of it. So I, I, I would, I would say to each and every one of you here, that, um, we all do our best to support this neighborhood plan, because at the end of the day, it's the future of our staple business. And, and hopefully get what, hopefully get what we, the people, and the council wants in this area.
Mr Chair, I do have to explain that what you put in the neighborhood plan in the house, you are hoping to influence, and that's what happened. You cannot think, we want X, Y and Z, X, Y and Z will happen. It is to influence, but it will hold weight, and that's, this is as best as you can go for. Um, I will move forward to the next meeting, the meeting, first meeting of the steering group, twenty third of August. And there will be a report back on that to the next meeting in town council. Thank you.
The next item I need to tell you, uh, will you continue mentioning of the areas where the problem is? Uh, to the inspector.
Okay, so we're creating the same...
I'm happy, guys.
There's a drugs problem in Stapleford, I'll give out that, I like, I like.
No, we're looking back, we're lost again.
All he says on here, there's a serious issue with drugs in Stapleford, as, as many people are probably aware, and certain areas are worse than others. And all I'm asking for is that the town council contact the police, ask them to not only increase patrols in the area, but also to ask the police to support the rat on the rat campaign, what by getting them to put leaflets and posters in the areas and do press releases, because just to encourage people to report the issues, that, that's it, really.
Sorry, apologies. Right, what you're basically saying, Chair, is you're asking the town council to contact the police to ask them to, um...
Just do some kind of campaigning, yeah.
We can't ask them to up their, um, receipts, that we couldn't have any. We could ask them, uh, uh, we could say we're mindful that, um, they were no position to start a campaign, I think, on those lines. But I think that was the discussion, I think, because...
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm, I've got police rights, and we use our police day for long desk hours, day and a half. Police are pretty well updated, I was, and one desk, one address will be five seconds. This day, but I might tell you where, or if you're bored, you can. The police are well, well, well updated, I was, in the town. They're ma, uh, going to, uh, as you said, uh, 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 rat, uh, the cable, they're wondering, morning, police operation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of, um, activities going on, the police, uh, regarding this particular problem. And, um, and, uh, they, they, they've made it.
Can I just stop you there? We really don't want to talk about what the police are doing, I don't think it's appropriate to be...
Well, it is asking for that.
When we're being filmed tonight, I really don't think we should be talking about what the police are doing. To stay there well aware of issues, I think it's fine, but I don't think we should be going in. This is being filmed and will be on YouTube tomorrow, so, um, I really don't feel we should go into what the police are doing.
We can run it.
Don't, I, I don't think, I think we should steer off that one, thank you, Mr Chair.
Uh, yeah, I'll do one, I'll make a few ones. Um, I know that there is, oh, I'm going to be careful, don't worry. Um, I am concerned, there's always been, and there always will be in a town this size, a certain amount of areas or pockets where there is going to be a problem. I think we need to be very careful that we're not making it bigger than it is, um, which is basically running the town down and making it sound. I'm not saying it's not an issue, but I'm very concerned that we're actually making it like it's a serious problem. It is a problem that I can think of a lot of other areas that could be far worse. As regards having a campaign flying, uh, Gant McRae attended the priority setting meetings and he knows, he has the courtesy to respond to that priority and therefore should be aware of that, and the police are aware of that, and it's one of their priorities from those meetings. As regards increasing patrols, I'll explain two things. Firstly, where do they get the police from? We all know that the police are all established in every town, so I don't see where they're going to get the patrols from. And I'm not necessarily convinced that increasing loads of patrols is necessarily going to solve that sort of problem. Uh, don't wish to go into police things, but police, uh, police is evidence gathering, not necessarily patrolling, um. Sometimes it may appear that not much is happening, but they are actually doing that. Ultimately, anything that regards that thing, the police will go and give proof. Not just hearsays, not just, oh, lots of this, lots of that. So I think we need to be careful with that. And we need to accept the fact that the police do not have the staff to actually do extra patrols. Um, I mean, that's all I really want to say. But I really am concerned that we mustn't be saying that Stapleford are giving the impression that Stapleford is right with drugs because it isn't. We know that there are problems areas that always have to be. And that's probably always what we get.
Mr Chairman, I have a lot of approaches from individuals in the town, very upset, they're saying it's on the agenda. Um, they're looking for a positive feeling to be brought on the next, um.
Of course.
Um, I'll do a little bit of people, I don't know if they can remember, half years of this. They can't understand, but, um, it's lovely to be that right.
Let's try to miss Stapleford matters.
Mr Chairman, very good feedback from the Royal Ancient Seer for session, Professor Pusson, I present this room myself, attended this event, I'm waiting in the minute and I have a presentation coming by. Once I see them, I will facilitate them. Um, it was an interesting event, if you went, glued up on engineering, um, you, you possibly could have got there, I started and done the homework before I went along. Um, safety says, second trend, I'm looking at the issues and, um, by. Second trend, sorry, variegated, um, are looking to find, they're working with second trend, I should say, and they're looking to find, um, solutions to problems of, like. I'm not saying, maybe, maybe you were there to go, thanks, that we just come.
One of the things we wanted to talk on about, the band we brought coming from, uh, first of all, shake, shaking the town up and relieve any, uh, other, uh, other problems. I did not know what we called the dock, because I can't get that key door passed and the bus will work, I'm sure. That was originally a roof, that was, I'm sure. Here, but there's more to it than that, but can't really imagine.
As it's not, you didn't come with my party, you gave the bar a bit, sorry.
A lot of forgotten attention.
Yeah, um.
Ah, great, probably didn't. Very quick little things I'd love to add, uh, I know the things, one of the things I looked up was spoken out, uh, but I gathered from the thing, spoken out is that you have to get away from it, uh, because it can increase the flow. So they are looking at what is the best, the best possible solution to the, to the bad, I'm glad you.
Mr Chairman, conditions of the Stapleford, this is all one, um, I understand.
We know.
I understand that the county council are looking at this, I know the traffic transport have been pursuing it. I know that, um, it's right across the county. Um, I also have seen the correspondent selected that came in, that, um, there's money going to be made available and they're looking at improvements to town centre and I understand that roads may come into that. Um, there's a lot of things that, if you like, in the, boiling over in the pot at the moment, we'll wait to see what's happening.
Yeah, but just very quickly, um, I, I can understand the last traffic transport meeting, as most other people could probably understand. All we got back from them was that they inspected it and that they were basically dispossessed or satisfactorily legal. Um, I have noticed that several potholes have actually been highlighted on the church street, at least, I mean. Having said that, all the Greek collapsed bits, news of not far, all they're coming from, they're also brought up a little bit. So, I know now they'll be doing the same, and I'll be right aware that they'll be out there and they'll take their own. If it's below that, then both the gentleman will do it, but I'm not at all happy about it, but I was lost as to what further we can do. Other than that, they're just, that's it, um. Perhaps it's the sort of thing that's, uh, it's looking at, right, on to repeal, if there's a doubt, the gentleman comes out from the county council, perhaps we can, but not even about that too. Um, but I really don't, I don't know what more we can actually do if they're just sitting around and say, well, we've lost it and we're not going to do anything. Just create a rather a problem of an inaction, what, what to do with it? I think it's totally unsatisfactory. Derby are not a country for an absolute disgrace. And riding on a boss is like riding on a horse, I'll say. Um, so that, that's the situation as well, I can update on it.
I think so, they do come out, they do mention them, I mean, if they're legal, they're there, if they're not legal, follow them in. Um, I see, I understand they are looking for money for projects, but whether this will be one of the projects. Right, I think we need to throw around with the chairman and come back and do it.
Well, all I can say is I will keep pressing it every transport meeting, I will keep pitching and keep moving. And I'll keep moving every county council, hope that something happens. Um, and just be, nothing but a line, it's quite clear, I hope you get it.
Yes. Uh, the other, the other thing about, about what David just said, it's a standard that the work is done. It, it's not an asset, it's not, we're doing it wrong. You know, the, uh, actually telling that the inspector, whoever's supposed to be ordering work, does that inspector work and if it's not satisfactory, give him back. It's a very good idea.
Very, very quickly, um, because I know a lot of councillors always just say, I actually watched them do one of the potholes. Uh, gentleman was there, one man, and he spent eight and a half minutes putting in the pothole. He don't, he not even bother pressing the tarmac down, he just dropped it down and he sort of disappeared.
Well, we saw what you were getting from.
Um, but that's, it's, it's a same ball game, you know. They come and put it in, within three weeks, gone again, and I think that's something else.
That's the ground you want, I've got a target first and all this stuff.
Mr Chairman, people are complaining during the county council.
Exactly, and that's all we can keep doing.
Yeah. Uh, just, just, just the one tonight, is this, um, I'm just putting back on a few pieces of correspondence. I don't quite know what's going to happen this day because I just would be able to say there is no longer a minister for small businesses, I'm not quite sure where this is going. But, um, there's a need for improvement in the town centre area, we're all in agreement with that. The town council is in agreement with that, they have a lot of money, um, but it will be through bids, probably called counting. Um, what actual exercises they're looking to carry out is unclear. Once I get some more information, I will come back. The bids would be made to economic development, not to the town council. It would be made to economic development, the borough council, that. Yep, I will report back any further than that.
And for future agenda.
Mr Chairman, can I tell you, I have a number of items coming up for September and October, including the other vehicles next year for the 15th anniversary, fucking nice. Um, I also have the website to come up, and they could be planning, they'll be coming back up. Um, no doubt I will be, because you know a lot of the town centres, if you want to, unless you get anything burning, then I have to not put anything on this in September because we do have a lot of items coming up. Plus the fact we go also half past seven, start the next meeting because of the guy for competition awards beforehand. So if you bear with it, this is a legitimate year, I would be grateful. And there's a next council in Birmingham that has to be taken, that's true.
You just will have to work with the new councillor.
Just, okay.
We can't first.
Here, Mr Chairman, we should have this front of you. Um, I spoke about bits and pieces throughout the meeting, regards to this. End to end, I have no issues at the moment. Um, anyone who's tasked me, if you want to ask me to tell you, I can tell you that the one percent talent interview starting has been agreed for this year and for next year up to 2018 through the end of the year. And you have that. If anyone, you have that, so far, thank you. Right, the next meeting.
They've got the next meeting.
The next is September and it's the seventh day, it's a couple of later, and we will.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, of my new councillor. The councillor James James, I'm getting, and, uh, and you said you were, what, in your work?
Mr Chairman, this is about seven to five, same.
Can I tell you, sorry, we're getting.
I've never heard of this, but I'm a bit soft, Mark, he's my ward councillor, he thinks it's nice.